I'd like to welcome everyone at this time. Jenny, if you can take the role.
Councilmember Thorson is absent. Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. Mayor Furlong.
Here. The Corum is present at this time motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Mayor, I'd like to poll a couple of items and add one quick. Under City Business Action Items, I'd like to poll B, C, and D, please. We're still tweaking some of the numbers and want to come back with a little more clearer information, so we'd like to poll them at this point, if we could, please. And then I'd also like to add, under the consent agenda, and this is just moving forward with 90% of the tax increment revenues generated from the Lilly project being pledged to the developer. Of course, we'll come back with final numbers on that, but just to show that we're moving in that direction and that you guys are approving.
You want to add that to the consent?
Consent agenda, please.
Okay. Are you okay soaring with all that?
I am.
Okay. So at this time, motion to adopt the agenda excluding the B, C, and D, and adding the TIF of the Lilly News to the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. So at this time, the consent agenda, and I'll turn over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A under the consent agenda is the August 16, 2022 workshop minutes. Item B, August 31, 2022 special city council meeting. Item C, September 6, 2022 workshop minutes. Item D, September 6, 2022 regular meeting minutes. September 7, 2022 workshop meeting minutes. Item F, general claims of $1,823,595.61. Item G, HRA claims of $24,680.17. Item H, EDA claims of $1,828.50. Item I, set public hearing date for a special assessment for unpaid bills on October 18, 2022. Item J, Sepulveda Boulevard and Charles Street public parking lot rehab. Item K, declaration of public works equipment surplus. Item L, 2022-2023 school resource officer agreement with Independent School District 622. Item M is Minnesota Municipal Power Agency power sales agreement contract extension. Item N, resolution approving acceptance of donations received August 2022. And item O, building permit report for August 2022. And then the added item would be item P, moving forward with your direction and approval. We will certainly come back with a final, but moving forward with the 90% of tax increment revenue generated from the Lilly project pledged to the developer.
I'm not sure, but I, my letters were off a little bit. Unless I don't have the updated.
Was it off?
Was it?
They weren't off. You must not have.
I don't have the updated one.
It doesn't say you meant it at the top.
Okay. All right. Yep, so motion to accept the consent agenda and adding the item P to it.
And that's with the removal of B, C, and D.
Please.
No, just, no, we're just at the consent agenda right now.
Oh, yeah, just.
Okay. So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
By Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those, or at this time, anyone can pull an item if they do want to do so at this time. Good, good. So motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time meeting open to the public. Do have Juan and John Schmal, and we ask that comments be limited to three minutes per person, where the city council may ask clarifying questions of the speaker. No formal action by the city council. Discussion be held at these times. Welcome, John.
Evening, John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. I talked to Don today, and he was going to, said he was going to put in, and he was going to yield his time to me, so it didn't work out. That's a joke.
Sorry. You got three minutes.
This is about data requests, and the main one that I want to deal with, it was suggested to me to put in an email to the city manager and info the council, but I would find that that's not going to work very well because I had a data request in that the answer came back and I couldn't open it. Nobody could open it, the reply, and I waited, and the answer was, when I asked Jenny, how come you didn't answer my email on this subject? And she said, I thought it was spam. Spam. So at this particular point in time, at 79 years old, I produce spam. I, so anyway, I don't know if that's good or bad. The story that I'm dealing with is that I was asked by a neighbor to find out why two police, the reports on an incident. And so I went to the police department first because there were two police cars, two officers, one code enforcement vehicle, and one code enforcement officer that went to this incident. So he knows that I do the LexisNexis, and, you know, I look at it, and I said, okay, I'll wait till it shows up. It never showed up at that time and that date, which was Monday of last week. So I, on that Wednesday, I went into the police department and said, here's the date, here's the time, can you give me the incident? And looked it up, and it was a PPV, which is something with Police Proactive Visit. But there was no narrative, and there was suggested that I see code enforcement to see what the incident was all about. So knowing that that's an inter sanctum over there in the fire department and in code enforcement, you're not allowed in unless you're, you know, do some prior information that you're escorted in there. So I went back to the community services and said, how do I get into talking to code enforcement? I need to find out some information. At that particular point in time, I hear across one of the dividers, you have to submit a data request. No person that I could see, but just a voice. You have to submit a data request. And so, and just at that time, McKenzie walks up and goes through the door, and she's standing there. So there's Jenny, there's Jill, and now there's McKenzie dealing with me, looking at me. And so I said, McKenzie, how do I find out about the, what happened on a particular day with code enforcement? Well, is that my three minutes?
It's three minutes. You want, so your data request is for that incident?
This is not, this is the second time when I said to McKenzie, she said, I wasn't working that day. Again, across the divider comes this voice that says, you must submit a data request. And at that point in time, Jenny comes up and she's, I'll help you. Here's a piece of paper. Here's the data request document. You can fill this out. And I said to her, I have a computer. And at that point, this voice from across the divider says, see, here he goes again.
So what I would ask?
So I left.
Okay. So what I would ask is that you talk to Brian about that.
I can tell you, I am ticked to be treated that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Okay, anybody else? Okay. City Business and Action Items, City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A is the proposed tax increment financing district calling for the public hearing. Calling for that motion, and that would be, a public hearing, the council would meet on November 1, 2022, approximately 6:30 PM to hold the public hearing on those matters.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second at your own.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to hear from Michaela.
Oh, the public hearing is?
I'm sorry, yes, please.
I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor members, sorry.
I'm sorry, Michaela.
No, that's okay. Just to clarify, because I know we discussed in the workshop, the request from the developer for tax increment financing assistance. So this action item is requesting that the council call for a public hearing that will be held on November 1, at which point then the city would be asked to hold a public hearing on the tax increment. So tonight is simply to authorize moving forward with creation of the tax increment district, which then triggers notifications to the county commissioner, to the county and school district with the draft TIF plan and the fiscal and economic impacts of the tax increment district. And we will be back on November 1, or before, but on November 1 regarding creation of the tax increment district and the finalized terms of the, of the assistance in the agreement.
Okay. So do we need a motion then, or do you? So we, the motion's been made and, made and seconded. So any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Michaela. Appreciate it.
Mayor, maybe just to clarify, I think this is the, in the consent portion was support of the requested amount of tax increment assistance, and then this is going through the motion of creating the tax increment, tax increment district. We will be back with all the final terms and the agreements and, and plan and district for your review and consideration of approval on November 1.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion.
Yep, sorry about that, Michaela.
City Manager Frandl.
Next item we've polled, B, C, and D, so next item up is E, the preliminary 2023 City General Fund, HRA, and EDA budgets and property tax levies. We have Finance Director Dan Winnick here to speak to us for that. Thanks, Dan.
Welcome again, Dan.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers, let me get connected up here. Hopefully, this goes a little bit smoother. So I think to date, we had four budget meetings.
Yeah.
Now I can see from last time when I touched the screen, I got little, little marks on there, and I'll never know how to get those off. So today, we've had.
Comes your little.
Little help.
She'll, she'll help me. Our official budget kickoff occurred on July 5 of this year. We kind of looked at where we're at in the 22 budgets, kind of the impacts, some driving factors for 2023, and looked at some, you know, potential impacts of the 2023 on tax, on property tax impacts. We also had a meeting on the July 19, August 23, and September 7. What has been attached as far as the budget for the general fund, the Economic Development Authority and the Housing Redevelopment Authority are all a byproduct of our meetings of where we stood and what we have accepted. And so tonight, by statute, by the end of September, the city has to certify their preliminary tax levy, which is the maximum tax levy, which it means is we can't go up from here. We definitely can go down, and obviously, we will be scheduling a number of other meetings where we can touch base back on the general fund, but we really do need to look at the enterprise funds, and then there's a number of other budgets that are primarily, whether it's Fire Relief Fund or the Maintenance Budget and so forth, which really do play a lot off of the capital improvement program, and that's why I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to look at that earlier tonight again. So today, we're going to be certifying the maximum levy for taxes payable in 2023 for the city, the HRA, and the EDA. We're also going to make a motion to set our truth and taxation public hearing date for the taxes payable in 2023, December 6, at 6:30 is what is being recommended. The city levy, the preliminary levy for the city is to be six, approximately $6.5 million. That's a 12.59% increase, or $732,000 increase over the 22 levy. At the, that levy amount for a median household in the city of North St. Paul, median household now has risen to $273, almost $274,000. That's 15.5% over what it was in this past payable year of 2022. You have to remember that assessment values for homes are done on January 2 of the preceding year, so that's why it shows 2021. At that, this tax levy change would be an increase of approximately $119 on that property. This budget that is being proposed to you to be approved for the preliminary standpoint focuses on the basic services of the city and funding these activities adequately, focuses on public safety, focuses on appropriate staffing levels to deliver extraordinary services, and demonstrates a commitment to existing infrastructure and proactive repair and replacement, and adheres to a balanced budget. The budget also is going to add, from our 22 budget, five additional staff, a community services director, police officer. Those two actually have been approved earlier in this year, mid-year, but from a budgetary standpoint, they're not included in the budget. So this budget will include those two additional. In addition to that, a fire inspector, an accountant, and a public works maintenance worker, and then an additional almost $200,000 to go into street maintenance. Those are really coming off of the goals that were set on that July 5, which the city council really focused on staffing levels and infrastructure. And I, again, that's the importance of why that CIP is such an important, and keeps me up at night at times. In the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, there's been some just great dialogue that's happened at the city council this year, and one of our council members, Councilmember Thorson's not, not here this evening, but had asked some questions, wanted to see fund balances, that everybody got to see the fund balance. And it truly is, is clear that the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, based upon, and we'll have a little bit more discussion later on this evening in the HRA meeting itself, but it, based on what the program does today with the student-built housing, at the end of last year, it had a cash balance of over a half a million dollars. Now, in this year, we've sold a property, so our cash balance has gone up even higher. So there is an opportunity to not levy for the HRA in 2023. That is the option that is presented in front of you that we've discussed in our council meetings and workshops up to this point in time. What that would mean is that that would be a decrease of $34 on that median value home. We still would be able to do this student-built housing program. We'd still be able to do acquisition of real estate redevelopment, monitoring remaining home improvement and emergency loans, which we currently have four outstanding, and everybody is current on their, on their payments. And then personnel and overhead expenses to administer the fund. We still would be able to afford that even though we do a 0% levy. And then in the future years, we would raise that levy back up as, as the need arises. The Economic Development Authority, which is being proposed in front of you for the 2023, is to keep the levy the same as it is in 2022, having a 0% increase. Because of market values increasing and where we're at, this is, actually will result in a $9 decrease on a median value home. We still will be able to, and I've spoke with the Economic Development Director, and we'll still be able to do acquisition of real estate for redevelopment, developing of strategic vision for economic development, branding and marketing our city to internal and external audiences, providing existing business with local and regional resources, personal and overhead expenses to administer the fund. So even though we're not increasing the levy based upon what we statutorily could do, we still will be in a very good position. So overall, even though the city's levy will go up, the HRA will be basically eliminated for the 2023. EDA will be the same. It has an 8.48% levy increase. Again, around the area, the next slide here shows what the debt levy summary, which is pretty much the same as it was in 2022. But here's kind of a, in the area of what we're, of what we're seeing. Just got word, Little Canada at this point in time, had not given information on what they were looking at for their preliminary levy. Got an email this morning. I believe they passed, I think it's either 12.3 or 12.5% levy increase. So even at that 8.48% overall, we're really more in the, the middle range. There's definitely some that have a lot higher levy being proposed. I think Oakdale is, I think is, I think it's tomorrow night will be passing. I think it's going to be 12% is where they're at. So I think we've done a very good job. We've accomplished a lot. I mean, when you look at it from the 22, there's five new positions to finally get us, I'm going to say, the pre-pandemic times, because we did reduce staff four back in 2020, and we do, were able to put some more money into our street maintenance, which is, is absolutely needed. As you can see, the trends for the market value, market values have gone up significantly. Overall, the total estimated market value has gone up approximately 17.8. The median value home has gone up 15.5%. Again, we've really had a, a big trend all the way going back to 2014, where market values have just continuously increased. Here's some, some statistical information from the Assessors Office on Residential, Apartments, and Commercials. You can see the Residential's 15.5, Apartments 14.5% increase, Commercial 3.2, and Industrial 10.4. So again, across the board, we're seeing market value increases for payable 2023. The general fund budget is attached in line item detail, so everybody can look at it. Here's just kind of a summary of where we're at with that, with that budget, and showing the increases. We're increasing the overall budget approximately $1.2 million. Again, part of that is some questions that were raised here by city council, and so we've increased significantly our permitting revenue, which, on the opposite side to it, if we raise our revenue, since we contract for that service, we also got to raise the contractual services that are related to those. But what that did was that allowed us to build in a little bit more infrastructural money for some of the park needs that came through their plan in the CIP that are being funded from the general fund. So all in all, I think we've accomplished quite a bit up to this point in time, not to say that we, we're not going to have future discussion on the budget. The estimated impact ran four scenarios here of looking that all of them are playing at that 8.48 total levy increase, that if you had a property that had no value change, you would actually see a 9% decrease in all components of the city property tax. If your home, you know, raised the median value of 15.5, this 8.48% levy increase would have an impact of about 7.3% increase, which would amount to $76, or basically, you know, about eight and a half dollars a month increase from, from where we're at in 2022. Even if you, if you had a property that value, value increased of 7.29%, you still would see a decrease. And then on the other side, if something increased higher than that 15.5, like a 17.35, you would see a 9%. But again, it's still underneath that, that double-digit mark. So with that, I'll ask, I'll stand for any questions that you may have. If there's no questions, what I'm looking for city council to do tonight is to pass the three resolutions that were attached to the document, and then to pass a motion to set the 2023 Truth and Taxation Meeting for Tuesday, December 6 of 2022 at 6:30 PM.
Any questions for Dana at this time? It's been a long process.
It's been, yeah, and we have, we have a long way to still go. We have those enterprise funds. We need to look at where they're at and kind of digest those, those 10-year financial plans that were presented before and see where we're going to be, and if there's any rate changes that need to, to be made, so.
we're going to be, and if there's any rate changes that need to, to be made, so.
So at this time, make sure you get these all right, Dan. Resolution adopting the preliminary 2023 general fund budget and setting the preliminary 2023 general fund tax levy and debt service levy? That's the first motion? Resolution?
Correct, yes.
Is there a motion? Moved by council member Wong.
Second.
Second by council member Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second one would be resolution adopting the preliminary 2023 tax levy for the North St. Paul Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Correct.
So moved by council member Peterson.
Second.
Second by council member Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Third one is resolution adopting the preliminary 2023 tax levy for the North St. Paul Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
Moved by council member Wong.
Second, your honor.
Second by council member Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And the fourth one is setting the, I don't have that in front of me.
If you could just introduce a motion to set the 2023 truth and taxation meeting for Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 at 6:30 PM.
Okay, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by council member Peterson, second by council member Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Did a great job.
Thank you.
City manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up is reports from city manager and departments. So we had a staff meeting today, and the police department's in their hiring process of a new officer. Sounds like they have a really good candidate that Phil is chief. Phil is known, and it sounds like it's a really good officer, might be coming from Inver Grove. The fire department had orientation for new firefighters. Looks like they have some good candidates coming out of that. They do have their booyah coming up on Sunday, October 2nd. They have pre-sale availability online, or the line starts to sell, to sell at 11:00 AM on Sunday, October 2nd for that. Remind you this again later, but, and they have fire prevention week coming up, second week in October, and they'll be out to the elementary schools doing programs with the kids for fire prevention. We had the Burwolds at the Public Works today. They were doing the fixing of the roof, the temporary fix. It's not the complete re-roof, but just to get us through the winter with some of the issues that we were having. Also, they're still waiting on the boiler and the heat exchanger for the boilers.
We have like an update on the hail damage that was done? Are they, are we looking at all that?
We're really behind on that.
I mean, do we, do you know if we have damage on park buildings, or?
We do know that, yes, there is.
We do know we have hail damage done.
Not known yet.
Okay.
I've been speaking with the insurance company on that, and they're still working on it.
Okay.
Yep. Public Works has a contractor in town going out doing televising and sewer cleaning. That's still going, they have a couple of weeks left, but seems to be going well. Also doing hydrant flushing and finding issues and fixing them as they go. Dan has our INCODE going to the cloud here on October 27th, so hopefully that'll go well.
He's going to the cloud?
Yes.
We'll see you later, Dan.
Yeah. Yeah, he's up in the clouds. And electric department, they did, we did get our poles in. They were ordered earlier in the spring. They have come in, so they'll be doing pole changeouts around town for the ones that the structural integrity has been compromised, so we'll be changing them out. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Reports of council, commission committees, council member Wong.
Yeah, so the Arts and Culture Commission had met, and they're just discussing some of the fall frolic activities, and their role will be looking at finding crafters for the fall frolic. The next meeting for the Arts and Culture Commission is on the 5th of October at 6:30. And then as for the Planning Commission, tonight, we had put on the consent agenda, approval of the PUDs and some comp plan amendments as well. And their next meeting is the 6th of October at 6:30 here in the chambers.
Thank you. Council member Peterson.
Yeah, the Ramsey County League of Local Governments had a Zoom meeting on mental health in the classroom, and I thought it was very interesting. Mental health is, you know, worldwide, or, you know, it involves kids, and it was very worthwhile. League of Minnesota Cities, I finished up with my policy meeting on revenues, and they still have a lot of money that the state has, and hopefully next year they'll disperse some of that, so that's all I have. Thank you.
And I'll just update on the EDA. We did have a meeting this past week, and we heard a gentleman that was, belongs to a marketing firm, and we're looking at doing a marketing piece for North St. Paul. We did one about 10 years ago, and now that we've done a lot of these projects, it'd be nice to kind of update that and do a marketing piece for who we are, where we, where we've come from, and just kind of give a big shout out for the, for the city and some sort of marketing piece. Also like to say, one of our members on the EDA, our treasurer, and he became ill this last week, so prayers out to him and, and the family. He is going to be out, I think, for quite a while, and possibly may not be coming back to the, to the EDA, so I want to let you know that. And general business, council member Wong.
Well, we had this parade last week, and I just a big thank you to city staff who put together all those moving pieces, and a big thank you to Carrie for, I don't know, hundreds of, 100 floats or something like that, so thank you. Yeah, it was a good time.
Council member Peterson.
Take you back on that, Carrie did a great job, the business association. You didn't put me behind the horses, or the horses, no, but thank you. There's a candidate's meet and greet on September 28th at 6 o'clock at the American Legion, which is next Wednesday. Everybody's invited. You get to, get to see the candidates up close and personal, and encourage people to attend. And that's all I have. Thanks.
And my shout out is to Carrie also. Thank you, Carrie. I know you're shaking your head, no, but if it wasn't for you and all your people that helped support the parade, I think we put on like one of the best parades. I heard it from many people that, who are part of Winter Carnival, who have been to a lot of parades this last year. This was probably one of the biggest parades that they've been into, well organized, and a lot of that goes to Carrie, and I want to just, big shout out to you, because I know I saw you that night, and you looked like you had a mission going on, and I didn't want even, I didn't even want to talk to you, because I thought you were going to start yelling or screaming or whatever. But it just goes to show that, you know, North St. Paul, they also had the St. Peters Festival this weekend, and just a lot of, a lot of things were going on, and downtown was happening with the last car show. I want to shout out to the History Cruisers for another successful year in putting together the car show, the new restaurant downtown. You know, people are just excited to be downtown and walking, walking the street, and just all the volunteers that, you know, people don't realize how much effort it goes in to put on these events, so I want to say thank you to everybody for that. We do have another parade, our POW MIA parade, that's this Thursday. It starts at 6 o'clock down at the, 6:30?
That's what I thought. Six o'clock?
Yeah, I believe it's 6 o'clock. Yep, so it starts down at the VFW, and we'll march from the VFW down to the Veterans Park, and we have a program that's going to last probably 15 to 20 minutes. We do have a Brigadier General that's going to be speaking at the, at the park, and we have, I have a mayor proclamation, recognition of that day. So another good event. We'll be finishing off the summary here, I hate to say it, but winter is coming, and it's coming sooner than what we think. So other than that, anything, anybody else miss? City attorney, you got anything to say? So with that, motion to adjourn. We do have a HRA meeting after this, so motion to adjourn. Moved by council member Peterson.
Second.
Second by council member Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we'll start the HR meeting in a few minutes here.
No, I did not, I did not.
Oh, it was on the, it was on the tip of your tongue.